Now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on February 28th, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please? Knutson.
Here.
Gross.
Winn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Gross are present. He is at the school board meeting and will be here shortly. We also have the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jones.
Second.
Seconded by Winn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Onto item number four. So this is part of our 150th anniversary where we will be honoring individuals and organizations who have had a significant impact on the city of Coralville. So tonight, I am honored to read this certificate of appreciation for our good friends at Harry's Trophies. Whereas, as part of celebrating the 150 years of rich history and a bright future, the city of Coralville recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit within our community. Local businesses keep our community, the state, and America's economies growing strong. It is without question that Harry's Custom Trophies exemplifies the spirit of local business within the Coralville community. And whereas, since 1957, Harry's Custom Trophies has been an integral part of Coralville's history, when Harry and June Malicki opened for business out of their home at 2425 Second Street in Coralville, Iowa. And whereas, after a few ownership changes, James and Carol Minari purchased the business in 1971 and were joined in the business by their sons Kevin and Rick. In 1989, Jim and Carol moved the business to its current location at 1725 Second Street in Coralville, Iowa. And whereas, over the years, Jim and Carol never felt the need to advertise. It was craftsmanship and treating the customer right which in turn made word of mouth their best form of advertising. And whereas, the business remains within the Minaris as Kevin and Rick took over the business in 2010. They have never forgotten what their parents told them. Custom is our middle name. They learned at a young age to do everything they could to give the customer what they wanted, even if it meant going out of their way to provide it. And to this day, Harry's Custom Trophies continues the tradition of providing superior customer service. Now therefore, having served and continuing to serve in the Coralville community for more than 50 years, the city of Coralville wishes to recognize Harry's Custom Trophies for its dedication to the citizens of Coralville and surrounding communities. Signed on this 28th day of February 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, congratulations and thank you for your many years of service in our community. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
I'll try.
Great. You can go up to the microphone and you have five minutes.
I get a little emotional talking about mom and dad. Sorry.
Aww.
I'm Kevin Minari and this is my brother Rick. We are the owners of Harry's Custom Trophies. Rick, excuse me. Rick and I would like to thank the city of Coralville for recognizing our business tonight. We truly appreciate the support of this community and that of the surrounding areas. We have been able to grow the business over the past five decades to a level mom and dad. Excuse me. Never thought possible. Without this support, we would also not have been able to survive the loss of business from the recent pandemic. We're pleased that we are still here to serve the numerous businesses, schools, organizations, and individuals. Again, we thank you very much for the special recognition tonight. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. All right. So I have this. We have a frame for you as well as the certificate of appreciation. So if you'd like to come up, we can take a photo. I'll leave that there. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. And here's your frame. There you go.
From Harry's?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, on to item number five, community comments. This is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I think we have someone that would like to address us this evening. If you could sign in, state your name and your address and tell us what you're thinking.
So my name is Dustin. I presently do not live in the Coralville area, but on the date of the incident, I did. I lived in Iowa City for many years. So I would like to respectfully file a complaint against Kevin Olson over there in regards to how he has handled restitution. So I was a driver for Yellow Cab in Iowa City for many years. I came to his office and paid for a license right over there for a specific license to drive a taxi, paid for one in Iowa City, paid for one in Cedar Rapids. And one day, I had a gentleman, I picked him up in Iowa City, drove him to the America. All the details are here in this paperwork I'm going to submit, so I don't remember exactly everything. Delivered him to a hotel in Coralville. The guy didn't pay me, so I called the police. Police came and they arrested the guy. His name was Brett Hamilton. He was charged with theft. He went to court. Courts found him guilty. And after he was found guilty, you know, I kind of figured, okay, well, where's my restitution? You know, the cop said I was going to get my restitution and he's found guilty. It's kind of common sense, whether you're a lawyer or not a lawyer. It's kind of common sense that if somebody's charged with theft in a situation like this, that victim gets restitution. So I called up Kevin Olson over here and asked him, you know, about what was going on. And he told me, well, Brett hasn't paid his fines, and when Brett pays his fines, you'll get your restitution first and then the city will get their money afterwards. So at that point, I kind of lost track of time. So I did a background check on Brett, knocked on the door, all of all of his last known addresses, and did some talking to people. And then about a month later, he paid his fines. And I have the paperwork here. It's like $435. So at that point, when I saw the fines were paid, called, you know, Kevin Olson over here again, and I asked him, you know, hey, well, how do I get this money? You know, is that a check or how does it work? And he had this snotty little attitude, well, I just don't have to pay you. And I just think that's absolutely despicable that, you know, a government is going to act in a way like that, you know? If somebody is stolen from and the defendant is found guilty, it's very common sense that, you know, victims need their restitution. And especially since the cop said I would get paid and Kevin told me on the phone that I will get paid, you know, and he had this little excuse that, well, Brett didn't pay his fines, you know? But at the end of the day, it's very clear whether you're a lawyer or not a lawyer, this is the wrong way to handle a situation. And I'm also here because all my other coworkers at Yellow Cab, they always told me that if somebody doesn't pay their cab fare, don't bother calling the cops because it's a waste of time, you know? You'll never get your money. And a couple guys said that, oh, well, I did get my money. I just had to wait very many years and go through a bunch of hoops. So it did show me that there is a way for taxi drivers to get their money, but just the fact that you have to go through this much, I mean, the date of this loss is February 27th, 2016. You know, it's just unacceptable that I've had to wait this long, go through this much work. And 99% of taxi drivers are not going to go through all this. And I just want to just say this so that the next time somebody goes to the police and they are a victim of theft, that the right thing is done in government and Kevin Olson makes sure those people are paid the restitution that they earned. Thank you for your time, everybody. I'd like to submit this to.
Sure. Yep, come on now. Yep.
So I have everything, all the air you need.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Was there anybody else that would like to speak to us this evening? All right. We will move on to item number six. This is a public hearing for the Oakdale Boulevard Extension. This project will extend Oakdale Boulevard west of the Jones Boulevard roundabout to its intersection with the Crossing Ridge Driver Project to be constructed by the Clear Creek Amana School District to access the new elementary school. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting all for the Oakdale Boulevard Extension. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Any questions or comments or discussion on this item? Could I get the roll call, please? Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item number seven, Westland Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase One Public Hearing. Phase one of the Central Trunk Sewer Project will build a trunk sewer from the Clear Creek Amana Community School District New Elementary School Site to the northwest corner of Highway 6 and Lucas Avenue. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting all for the Central Trunk Sewer Phase One. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please. Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent.
Could I just ask, not a question about the trunks, but are there plans to extend Lucas Avenue or is that way off in the future?
Yeah, that will be.
Eventually.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Did we get that, finish that roll call? Yes. Yes, okay. All ayes with Gross absent. All right, item number eight, fiscal year 2024 budget maximum levy. So we, the saga continues. Here we are again with this. This will set the total maximum property tax dollars hearing for fiscal year 2024 as required by the state of Iowa. And if you've been following, we've had to table this on, I think, two different occasions. So I would entertain a motion again to table the resolution setting the public hearing, public hearing date on the total maximum property tax dollars for fiscal year 2024 until March 14th, 2023. Could I, could I get that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Knutson.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Kelly, do you want to give us a little bit of an update?
Yeah, the governor did sign the legislation which changed the rollback for the current year, and the Iowa Department of Management is recommending that you not take any action until you get the final numbers from your county auditor for the valuations for the current year. The county auditor's office indicated that they thought by this Friday we should have that information, which will then give us what the final difference or change to our budget would be. And so we would be ready then to move forward after that point. I did get the TIF information from, from their office last Friday, and they asked just for us to check it, and I did, and it was right within that percentage that we would have expected from the change in the rollback. It's approximately 1.8% decrease.
Any other questions about this or comments?
I have a comment. We've had a quarterly report, financial report. Thank you for that. It looked to me like we got some pretty good news with regards, especially with regards to hotel motel tax. I'm looking at it now. It was expected, I guess, to be 55% at this, at that point. That's at the end of January, I guess, and it was, the revenues were 79% of that. Do we have an idea of how much money that is?
Yes, it's, I figured it out, and it's going to be about 1.6 million is what it would be estimated currently.
In addition?
Right.
So I guess I would, you know, advocate, given that information, given that we will, you know, there's no reason to think next year will be worse, might be similar, that before increasing the levy, I would like to look at that very carefully and think about whether our estimates of hotel motel tax could be adjusted based on these new data. And would easily, I mean, if you're right, it's about 400,000 short. We're 1.6 million over in hotel motel tax this year. I think, I don't think we, I don't have it in front of me, but I don't think we projected much of an increase in that tax compared to what we projected last year.
Yeah, I think it was about 400, 500,000 more.
Yeah, so, so we are 1.1 ahead of that. We're approving hotels. That may or may not get done, but, but, you know, it very well could continue to go up. So I'll be a little hesitant to increase our levy, just to put that out there. That's an option. It's certainly on the table, and I want to consider that. But, but if we have very, if we have good news, and it looked like there were other good news, other good news in this report as well, it's hard for me to decipher at times exactly what our projected surplus will be this fiscal year from these reports, as I've mentioned in the past. But it looks to me like it's a pretty good report, and if I'm right about that, I'd be a little hesitant to support an increase in the levy.
And will, that will all be up for discussion when we set the public hearing and.
They have to go on the agenda with a specific value that.
But the maximum levy is the maximum. That doesn't mean that you have to levy that amount.
And we, there's still, we will discuss that.
Right.
We, we don't have that rate set. We had just had a discussion during the work session, and we will discuss it at the next meeting when we have the public hearing.
Correct. And the maximum levy, once again, says the maximum, not the actual.
So when would we roll that back? Have we ever rolled that back historically?
Yeah, we've had it higher than what we actually implemented. It's only been two years.
What's that?
It's only been in place two years, the maximum levy.
Ah, okay. And, and what's the timing?
The timing.
We would need, if we vote on it, the maximum levy, as we discussed a few weeks ago, and we said, well, we're getting better news as I just, and we may not need to.
The actual budget would be when you would adopt what the, and the maximum levy, as it says, sets the maximum. The actual budget sets out the actual number.
So that's just a few weeks later?
Yes.
And that only buys you another two or four weeks or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the, all of that will be, like I said, we have not, we've had some discussions about what that could look like, but we haven't made any decisions yet. And we still have time to discuss and certainly will factor in the, your, your comments and when we, you know, as we, as we move forward with this. So we appreciate, appreciate you sharing that. Okay. So could I, we've had a motion, we've had a second, all in favor of.
Just want to make sure it's clear because I was at the school board meeting and just got here. This is just for the public hearing setting.
Yes, exactly. Yep, yep. We're not having discussions yet about.
Oh, we're tabling.
Yes, tabling. Yes, we're tabling it. We haven't, we're not setting the levy.
Just trying to get the update.
Yes, yes, yes. This is, yes. So we haven't made any decisions other than to table.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted unanimously. Okay, and we have been joined by Councilmember Gross. All right, on to item number nine. This is the third reading of an ordinance that, for our Clear Creek Mitigation Bank, this ordinance would allow the city to sell credits in the future to both public and private entities. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1001, an ordinance authorizing the city of Coralville to engage in offering the sale of private stream bank mitigation credits to public and private entities pursuant to Chapter 23A of the Code of Iowa. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments? All right, could I have the roll call, please? Winn.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item number 10, West Core Business Park, Part 14. We have several steps to this agenda item. The first is the third and final reading of an ordinance that would rezone the area to a commercial planned unit development two district, would allow the construction of a hotel and a retail building on West Core Drive. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1002, an ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as West Core Business Park, Part 14, Parcel 0635276007, from IPUD 1 Industrial Planned Unit Development 1 District to CPUD 2 Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third consideration, all ayes. Item B, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for parcel 0635276007, West Core Business Park, Part 14, Coralville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third consideration, all ayes. Item B, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for parcel 0635276007, West Core Business Park, Part 14, Coralville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call, please. Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item C, could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for West Core Royals and Josh and Dia Subdivision, Coralville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, roll call, please. Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 11, Summit Hills. This amendment is necessary based on the growing construction costs of this project and the rising interest rate market. The developer will be required to have three houses for sale at all times and make attempts to sell the houses. If they cannot sell, the developer will be allowed to lease these units until they can be sold. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an amendment to that development agreement with Blue Sky Developers for Summit Hills, Coralville, Iowa. This resolution introduced by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
So three houses have to be for sale at the same time. What does that mean?
It just means he's got more than that, houses, but he would have to have three for sale at any one time.
Okay.
And then he could presumably lease the others while he's trying to get them all sold.
So do those have to be completed houses or just foundations in the ground?
Well, the ones that he'd have for sale presumably be the ones that are completed. Yeah.
And what is the price base for the houses there when he first developed versus now?
The first number, Kevin.
So we had, we had a couple phases in this. So if you remember, there are some lots on Hughes Street that already had the road in. So there were like two or three at 210, and then two or three at 230. And then he put the, all the streets and sewer in. I think that raised it to like 265, and it's been going up 5% a year. The problem, this, so this would be, in two years, it would be to 325. That's where, that's where this is, so.
I think I missed the steps in between the 200 or 200,000 and now what the price is. I didn't realize about the streets and the sewer and so on.
Yeah, so that plat was, when we bought that, that, when we put the water and, water and transit facility up there, we bought that from the Nye family, and they sold us all the rest of the lots. But it was from a 1919 plat, and then they replatted in the 80s. And there, so all the houses that are being built now are on the streets that are, that he put in later.
That he put in. I didn't realize that.
So yeah, he, so it, the first couple houses we sold were on Hughes Street, which, if you remember, goes up to where the fire training facility, that street was in. So those were, he just built the houses and it's cheaper. Yeah.
So did we, did we change the agreement as he built, after he built the street?
No, that was in the original agreement.
So 5% had.
Yep.
And he, so this is, how, how old is this project? So we've gone from 220 to 325 at 5% increases?
No, that was the first ones that were, didn't have the infrastructure in. The number went up to 265.
265, that's where we were at with the new street.
Very low 200s when we did the first ones. Because we had like, I know two of the houses were sold by, were brand new teachers. Yeah. So we were trying to market homes so that new teachers could afford a house. So two of the four, I think it was four, were purchased by, you know, first or second year teachers. I guess my question is, the, is it the same model? There, I believe there are three different models, so he's going to have one of each model on the, on the market. But are they different models than what was on Hughes Street originally? I think it, I think. That's what I'm just trying to figure out, the price jump.
So, well, the. Biggest price jump was because he has infrastructure costs, that he had to put water, sewer, and streets, and stormwater in, that he didn't have to on the first lots.
And maybe I'm naive on that, like, wow, what does that cost? I guess I'm just surprised going from. He told me it was, he thought it was going to be six to 700,000, and it'd be a million to put all the roads and sewer and water in.
Extrapolated over what, about 12, 15 homes or something?
I, that sounds about right. Because some of the lots are, you know, have pipelines going through them, and some of, there's a couple that are, I'm not sure you can get a house on because they're weird shaped.
And how long is this agreement for?
Until they all get sold.
So what prevents him from just renting these forever?
That was my question.
Because he always has to have three for sale at that, at the agreed upon price.
And because part of the goal is to have the area be owner occupied.
Right.
That, the, the goal, one of the things that we were looking at, one of the strategies for that area was making sure that there wasn't a lot of turnover. So that was part of the original.
So when he sells these ones now, or when he's renting, they have to put a deed restriction on that, once he sells them, the 20 year starts then, not when we did in the lots back in, I can't remember, three, four years ago.
And so they have to stay owner occupied for that time period.
So the new owner will sign something that they.
The deed from Mr. Thomas to the, for the buyer will have that in there. The deed from Mr. Thomas to the, for the buyer will have that in there, and it'll go with the land, so whoever sells, they could sell, we've already had one that turned over once already, but the, the, the twenty years goes on until twenty years from the first time it's owner-occupied.
So should this be rent control?
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know what rent, um.
Do we have the, I mean, is that, we can't really.
We don't really have the ability to rent control.
We don't have the ability to do that, do we?
No. Well, what do you mean when you say rent control? I, I think what he's, yeah.
Wait, wait, he could be making a ton of money, he doesn't have that much incentive to sell these right now.
Well, no, he does, because he always has to have three of them for sale at that price.
But they could be occupied and for sale.
He said he's not, they're not gonna be in.
Is that in the agreement?
They're not.
No.
I can put that in there, because he's, they're not gonna be occupied.
But they wouldn't be owner-occupied then.
Yeah, so.
No, but, but he could have, you can have it, you can put a rental property up for sale with somebody in it.
Well, you could, but it, this says that it has to be owner-occupied, so it has to sell to somebody that owner occupies the property.
And that would be counter to like the whole intent, when we try to have this income level or price point of houses. Because, well, give the developer credit, I mean, this person was actually doing price points at this level when nobody else was.
Right.
For the whole purpose of allowing young, I shouldn't say young, but, well, yeah, I would say young, professional, I mean, we even talked again about having almost a neighborhood of first, second, third-year teachers. So if we're trying to recruit teachers to this area, here are homes that a new teacher could afford. So I think this, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I just don't see that going, given that this guy did what he did from the get-go, if that makes sense.
You're not worried about that?
Not at all.
No.
Yeah.
And, I mean, and again, to be clear, like, when we're talking about the price points here, as, as Mitch said, we're looking at kind of that middle, what I would, I've heard the phrase, I've heard it used as kind of that missing middle when it comes to housing. That's, that is the, you know, the type of unit that some, like a nurse could afford, or like, you know, Mitch's example, and of the teachers being able to afford. You know, this was not intended to be very low-income affordable housing, but more that kind of mid-range. And again, the, the, we want to reduce the turnover in that neighborhood. So that's why that owner-occupied piece was in there.
And he has strived, um, at every different year or two, excuse me, my voice. He has strived to listen to us about what we've needed and wanted. I remember the conversation about making them, um, two-car garages, that that would suit families or young people more than, or whoever would buy at that moderate housing than a single garage, which would have been cheaper. So at each step, he has tried to, um, to do and to build in a way that would be affordable. It's just really surprising because of the infrastructure costs and so on, that it has reached to this amount. But he's, he's made such a nice area there that we could have never imagined before in Summit Hills.
I would agree with that completely.
Yeah.
I, I want to support it. I, I wonder a little bit about the cost of those homes versus the Scanlon property homes. Um, I think they're very comparable. Is that?
Not entirely, because they, like Mitch said, we.
There's multiple different.
Yeah, and, and they're, the, the ones that were the, the single-family homes, the, the first part of it, they were like in the two hundreds. I don't know off the top of my.
Two-ten.
Yeah.
I think the Scanlon ones are more expensive, but I think Scanlon's also. That's, that's a few years ago. But I think that's what's happening too, Mike, it's just the construction costs and, I mean, everything's just going up quite a bit. I mean, I'll say this about the Blue Sky, I mean, if every developer was, had this approach, we wouldn't have some of the existing issues we have in the area. I mean, he's just, he, he has actually tried to really carve out a, a niche of first-time homeowners in a, in a pretty good price point, I think.
Does he have any trouble selling the houses at this price point right now?
That's why he's.
He hasn't sold any.
No.
Oh, yeah. On, on, on that new street?
On the new street, he's sold a couple of them.
Yeah.
But he, he didn't have them listed because he, under our agreement, he couldn't, he was.
That's right.
He'd be selling them for less than he cost him to build them, and that's why he asked for the agreement change.
Look, the first ones, I remember Mitch, you said they, that you actually knew someone that purchased.
Yeah, I probably should have a finder's fee, because I got two teachers in, right, when I was at Northwest. I mean, just, and it was, probably it was people that had been renting, and they wanted to be homeowners, they just couldn't afford the price point in Corleville until this happened, and there was teachers that worked at Northwest that can literally walk to work.
We also had one of our volunteer firefighters that bought one of them as well.
Yep.
So do we need to both these things at once? We're letting them increase the price two years ahead of schedule.
Hmm.
And we're letting them start to lease. Does he need both?
Well, I think he's gonna try to get, the ones that are in process, he's gonna try to sell before he, before they're done, because I don't think he wants to rent them either. So I think what, there's kind of a fallback on, on that.
I don't think that Blaine wants to be in the business of being a landlord.
No.
I mean, that is not.
Nope.
Not his, um, not what he is, you know, his motivation, so I don't think we have to worry about that.
And I think it puts him at a bit of a disadvantage if we don't approve it all at once. I mean, it, it, and I would agree with the comments about him trying to be flexible, and I think he just caught, got caught at the wrong time in terms of price increases. I've been in most of these houses in my day job, and, you know, they're, they're, I have a coworker's daughter who bought a house there. She lived in older Corleville, she wanted a house that did not have any maintenance on, you know, so this is her brand-new houses, and, you know, they don't have top-of-the-line amenities, but they're perfect for young teachers, young nurses. Uh, this young lady that I was talking about works at the university, they're, you know, but I, I think it would put Blaine at a disadvantage if we don't allow him that option, and I don't think, as well, I don't think his goal is to, to have these long-term as, as leased homes up there.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts before we vote? Okay, roll call, please. Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number twelve, underwriting engagement letter. This item is for DA Davidson and Company underwriting services and required disclosures for Corleville's proposed offering and issuance of bonds in two thousand twenty-three. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an underwriting engagement letter and disclosures from DA Davidson and Company. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please. Quinn?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number thirteen, loan agreements. This item would allow us to enter into one or more loan agreements in the principal amount not to exceed fifty-five million for the purpose of refund all or a portion of outstanding taxable general obligation bonds, Series two thousand eighteen E, and its taxable general obligation urban renewal funding loan note, Series two oh one eight I. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on general obligation essential corporate purpose loan agreements. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, are we refinancing more bonds? Is that where this is going?
Yeah, this would be refinancing the arena, refinancing a loan from Great Western Bank, and then would also be for the purchase of the fieldhouse from, which is now leased.
And with current rates, it's still advantageous to do that?
Yes, it is.
And just to clarify, fifty-five million would not, that, that, that's just the ceiling. That is not necessarily the amount. That's just the max, yeah. Any other questions or comments on this?
This isn't tied to Oakdale at all, is it? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please. Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number fourteen, we have an amendment for the utility resilience project. This amendment will allow the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to continue providing advanced assistance with the exploration and development of the utility resilience project until July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, for no additional cost. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an amendment number one to subaward agreement number HMGP-dr four four eight three zero zero one five with the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the utility resilience project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments?
I would just point out, this is for the first of the two utility resilience grants. This is for the one that we already have that is paying for scoping and developing the second application, and so now we'll continue with design and environmental and historical so that if we get funded, we're ready to go. If we don't get funded, we have a better application for the next time.
Great, thank you. All right, could I have the roll call, please? Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number fifteen, community development block grant program contract. This would set a public hearing for the status of funded activity or SOFA for the purchase of commercial kitchen equipment for the Corleville Community Food Pantry, and this is administered by the East Central Iowa Council of Governments. The public hearing will be on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Could I have the roll call, or, I'm sorry, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the community development block grant program contract twenty-dash CBN-dash zero two five, status of funded activities. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item?
This is running a little bit behind because it was hard for the food pantry to get a contractor to do the amount of work that was being done there. They do have a contractor now, Hodge Construction is gonna be doing the work, and, um, it's gonna do it actually fairly quickly. It'll be done by the end of April, which will then also get us, um, well beyond, or will get us to the point where we need to be with the grant to, um, get all of the money back from them, so.
I just wanted to add that they start ripping stuff out today. It's looked different in there already.
Awesome.
So we already have the grant?
Yeah.
And we're voting on just the contract with Hodge?
No, this is, no, this is the hearing on the SOFA, which is just one of the requirements of the CDPT grant. You have to do it when you get to a certain point in, in the, um, grant phase.
And this is where they, they come, right, and they read the, they read the information into the minute, or the, the record?
Yeah, and part of the reason it was also hard to get a contractor, was a smaller project, and there's a lot of requirements, since it's a federal, um, grant, that a contractor has to deal with, and most of the contractors didn't want to deal with those requirements.
Any other questions? All right, could I get the roll call, please? Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Abstain what conflict?
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with one abstention. Item number sixteen, community development block grant housing fund program contract. The original grant for the owner-occupied housing exterior rehabilitation program provided up to twenty-five thousand dollars per home for exterior improvements for six homes not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. This amendment will extend the date from February first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, in order to provide adequate time to complete the rehabilitations of two homes. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing a request to amend that certain community development block grant housing fund contract number twenty-dash HSG-dash zero one zero. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments on this item? All right, could I have the roll call, please? Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number seventeen, Fifth Street Improvements, Twelfth Avenue to Twentieth Avenue. This supplemental agreement is for additional engineering services not covered by the original engineering services agreement. Could I have the resolution,
Resolution approving supplemental agreement number one with Shive Hattery, Inc., for Fifth Street Improvements, Twelfth Avenue to Twentieth Avenue. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item?
So this is just to go into detail of, of, of each part of the project itself, I guess?
This is for, um, work, yes, that they'll be doing for each of the individual parcels.
We've got Scott Larson, our city engineer, here.
Yeah, this just expands a little bit on the, the scope of their original engineering consulting agreement. Um, when that agreement was signed, um, you know, the design, actual design work had not started. Everything leading up to that point was based on rough estimates, and that's what led to us getting, um, partial grant funding for the project as well. But as we got into the project, um, the, multiple complexities kind of arose, and so this compensates the engineering consultant to, for the extra work that they've done, which has been necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, could I get the roll call, please? Quinn?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number nineteen, Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. The owners of the gym at Iowa River Landing wish to enter into a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option to renew for two-eleven East Ninth Street, Suite one-thirty in the Iowa River Landing District. Alternate proposals are due March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and the public hearing will be on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property and solicit alternate proposals for the leasing of two-eleven East Ninth Street, Suite one-thirty, Corleville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments?
Congratulations on getting another, uh, leasing, I guess. Um, this isn't, doesn't seem like it's quite the rest of that building that we.
No.
It's about another third of it? How much will we have left?
Yeah, we'll have, um, about four to five thousand square feet.
Four to five thousand. This was three, it looked like.
Yeah, so this is right adjacent to Blue Agape, that's, um, is currently remodeling the old lobby scene.
Questions or comments?
Congratulations on getting another leasing, I guess. This isn't, doesn't seem like it's quite the rest of that building that we?
No.
It's about another third of it? How much will we have left?
Yeah, we'll have about four to five thousand square feet.
Four to five thousand. This was three, it looked like.
Yep, so this is right adjacent to Blue Agape. It's, it's currently remodeling the old lobby scene of space.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wynne.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to B.
Second.
Moved by Wynne and seconded by Gross. Could I get the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wynne.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-one, city administrators' reports.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. First, the date has been set for the actual construction on First Avenue, interchange on Interstate eighty. We'll start March twentieth is the date when the, it'll go head-to-head down to two lanes, one lane in each direction. So just remind people to start paying attention to that. And we're very close to the start of the major part of that construction.
I assume there'll be signage going up soon to let people know?
Yeah, yep, there will be. And there's a lot of changes to the traffic signals as well. There'll be temporary traffic signals and then the permanent ones are getting pulled out. So a lot of changes coming up here.
And the bike lanes will be shut down, that entire project, or?
No. They'll be open.
Oh, they will?
Oh, I didn't realize that. The existing sidewalk along the west side of First Avenue will remain open. And that will stay open, stay usable through most of this year. Either later this year or early next year is when the new east side alignment will become available. And we'll switch folks over to there. So there will always be pedestrian access across eighty. That was a key element as we started the early design process. We knew we couldn't just cut that off completely, so.
That is great to know. I don't know why I assumed that was, I was, that's my shortest commute. I was planning alternative routes.
It wouldn't hurt you to go for it. The other thing is ragby is coming up and we are still looking for lots of volunteers. We estimate that we'll need somewhere on that actual day of about eight hundred people. And we still have opportunities for people that want to get involved in the nineteen different committees. So just if anybody out there is interested, please contact City Hall and we'll get you connected with the right people. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I really don't have a lot this evening. I just wanted to first and foremost say thank you to the library staff for hosting the Soul Food Dinner a couple of weeks ago. It was a fantastic event. I want to also say thank you to the folks that attended and waited patiently for the food to arrive. It, it was, it was just a really great event. We had over three hundred people and I was really grateful to, to host that event here in Corleville. And of course, thank you to Supervisor Roy San Porter for preparing the food and for all of the volunteers who helped out at that event. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone that attended the DVIP Super Bowl. We held that last Thursday here in Corleville. It was the first time we've been back in person since the pandemic. And we had over four hundred people attend that event as well. And again, really grateful to see everyone that comes out to support victim survivors in our community. And that is all I have this evening. City attorneys' report?
Nothing.
Okay. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank hi. And the food pantry, I finally got there to put a shift in volunteering and it felt fantastic. It's just a fantastic facility. Busy as heck. At least that morning it was. Worked you hard. I suspect that's what it's like all the time. So encourage everybody else to do that and if able. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gross.
A few things, Madam Mayor. First of all, thanks for letting me come late. I was at the school board meeting for my other, for the job that pays the rent. But I'm glad I got here. A couple of things I want to touch base, I was also at Soul Food Dinner on my notes. It was a great event. You should probably give a shout out to those who carried the food from the vehicles. I got more of a workout, I think, doing that than I should have at the gym. Second, we did have a CVB meeting this past week and things are good. I will say there, there was a little bit of a loss from the World Wrestling event that happened and really it had nothing to do with us. It was really the timing of, of the event. And I think maybe the World Wrestling group doesn't think so, but December might not be the best time to have a big wrestling event when it's in the midst of high school wrestling season in Iowa. So I think we're in the process of saying we'd like to host this event again, but the time probably needs to change for it to be worth our while to do that. Third thing, I decided to share this anecdotally. Yes, my colleagues remember, I kind of went a little rogue during my comments last week. I had more, a lot of people watch this, which I didn't realize. I had more people send me emails thanking me for what I said than, than I've had on issue in a lot of probably two or three years. So I think people are paying attention to the property tax rollback aspect much more than I thought they were. And finally, I wanted to get an update on, this is two-part, where we are with the First Avenue Extension Speed Limit discussion. What's the timeline there? And my recollection was that we had a discussion of that we don't normally put or change speed limits on roundabouts. But when I was going to the gym yesterday morning, I noticed we do have speed limits on the roundabout by North Central. So we do put speed limits on roundabouts. And I guess I'd like to know how we can speed that piece up, no pun intended, from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, the first, I'll take the second part first. The supplementary speed plaque is what you're referring to. That's the, the yellow speed limit sign that you do see approaching some roundabouts. That's the sign I mentioned, I believe, when we had that discussion, that, that it's no longer recommended by the, the manual that we all use to design signage for projects. So we do have some older roundabouts that have that supplementary speed plaque still.
Reminder, that's a, wow. Yellow sign, not a white sign. So that's a recommended, not a speed limit.
Okay. And as I mentioned before too, the idea is that overall design of the roundabout should mean that those signs are no longer necessary. That's the guidance. And then the other part was about the speed study itself. And MPOJC has that at the top of their priority list once weather conditions improve. So hopefully in March, we'll see whether, and pavement temperatures come up so the devices can adhere to the pavement and collect data, so.
The mayor did send a letter to Johnson County and they responded that they were waiting for the speed study.
Okay.
Yeah, and they were very helpful and very responsive. And I appreciate their attention on, on that issue. But the speed study will, will happen, is where we're at.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have?
Just, I have one. Just to clarify, the speed study is recording the speed of vehicles at this time, correct?
Yes, it will record the speed of all vehicles in both directions. It's specified points along the First Avenue corridor. And typically, the, the data is recorded for about three twenty-four hour periods in a row. We always pick, you know, during the school year when there's heavier, more typical traffic, so.
Assuming I'll just follow up, I got to sell my time, but were, were new stoplights put in coming out of the Hampton Inn?
New temporary ones, yes.
Okay. Is that for the construction that's going to be happening?
That is all about the diverging diamond interchange.
Okay.
And I'll just mention real quick that we do expect the DOT to put those into flashing yellow mode. Flashing yellow on First Avenue, flashing red on the Hampton Inn side and the River Products side. It's possible as early as this Thursday. And then those will actually become active on Monday. And then there's a process of, as Kelly mentioned earlier, of transferring from the temporary signals that are being installed and then removing the current permanent signals. That will be happening soon.
I guess my last thing, on the March twentieth deadline that we talked about, that Kelly talked about. So what kind of community, like do we alert people? Is that just like a PR thing that we do or how, how will people?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have signage and we'll also do all of our different media sources that we have.
Okay, do we make, like specifically, I'm just, I'm back in my day job again. I'm just thinking about the number of tardies that Monday morning of going from, you know, four-way traffic to two-way traffic on a main street at rush hour.
Well, that would be good for the principal to remind them of that school that they should leave early that day.
Fair enough, all right.
Anybody know the principal?
You need to do one of those robo-calls.
I'll just mention real quick that, that we have notified the school bus services directly.
Yeah, I was actually more about buses, yeah.
Yeah, we've kind of stayed in touch with them about this project and, and several others. And also just a reminder, this is an Iowa DOT project. So they are actively getting the word out through their 511ia.org website. And as Kelly mentioned too, there will be message boards conveying the message. But as with any type of project, we're going to do the best we can. We'll, we'll assist when we can. But it might take some firsthand experience for people to change driving behavior, so.
Do we have any way to recommend alternate route for people who don't live in this area?
Well, the, the, the part of that would be how do you even get the message to those folks? You know, what, our big concern right, right now would be just the, the regular commuting traffic. You know, there, there are limited options, Twelfth Avenue, Corridge Avenue, Dubuque Street. So, you know, what we always try and do is ask people if you have the, the flexibility to change your schedule. Sometimes even, you know, fifteen minutes can make a big difference today if you can go fifteen minutes earlier or fifteen minutes later. This is, this is going to be a little bit different. This is a big, a big impact on a very significant street, so.
For a long time.
For a year plus.
UIHC sends messages to every of their, all of their patients. So they'll notify them in advance. And RENA sends out advance to all of the people that have purchased tickets as well, telling them about parking, the bag policy, and then this will be in that as well. So those are two groups that'll have a significant number of out-of-town people that will get notices.
And the 511 website, I know a lot of people check that regularly. And if it'll be on, on there, if there'll be updates there, that'll?
There will be updates there. And I believe they will also reference our own website and vice versa, so. And just real quick, the UIHC does have a group that's actively involved in the weekly job meetings. And, and so they're, they're in the mix, I guess, as far as the pending construction start.
I didn't know if we could?
Support the businesses in these areas during construction, you know? Because it can be hard if they lose, if they lose that daily traffic. So we like to be sure that that's part of the message, too.
Yeah. I was, I was thinking more of rush hour, just to get, help get people, you know, to where they need to be. And especially for people who oftentimes don't read a lot of news or things like that. If we could share even alternate routes or thing on our website, on our social media, anything like that, so that they can help spread the words to others. I think that would be super helpful. Because I have people that get very frustrated because they didn't know that that was going to happen on that day. I mean, we might have, say it somewhere, but not on the sort they normally check for news. And so if we can, be my fault of covering every single source of news that going out to the general public, I think everybody would appreciate that.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that update. Do you have anything else, Mitt?
Nope, I'm done.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Wynne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So not this weekend, but next weekend, Friday, starting from, on Friday, the tenth, at the CCPA, the Young Footlighter have their show, Jack and the Giant Beanstalk, is opening on Friday at seven PM. And also on Saturday and Sunday, two more show. If you missed the Friday opening, it's going to take place at two PM. I would encourage everybody to go purchase ticket and support Young Footlighter. I have a friend that have a son that have never considered any sort of theater involvement. And he started to volunteer as an usher there with his mom. And he loved to seek it on the stage. And then when they put out the audition for Jack and the Giant Beanstalk, he auditioned and he got a part in it. It's a tiny part, but it's, it's, it made him super happy. So that was one of the impact that, you know, programs such as Young Footlighter and City Circle have in our community. And then WIC Clinic is going strong in Corleville. It's take place at the Corleville United Methodist Church every Tuesday, every fourth Tuesday of the month. It's by appointment only. It's happened from nine o'clock to four-thirty PM. And I just checked in with them today and every single time that they come here to Corleville, they all fall. That mean that the need is here. And when we bring service here, people do utilize it. I'm hoping that we can work out a different time so that they can come to Corleville more than just once a month. Library have some program that has been happening that's really exciting, especially geared toward younger people in our community. So on Thursday, school is out early. And they have a program, it's called Early Out Games and Craft, that's the children department put on. And it's take place in the library storytime room. It's going to be from two-thirty to three-thirty. And the game and craft kind of rotate from week to week. One week it could be Lego, another week you could make a craft out of pipe cleaner, things like that, it's really fun. And then for the teen, they have a Thursday teen hangout from three-thirty to five PM. And there's snacks and crafts and story and things like that for teens to just have a safe place to, to hang with their friends. That is all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Councilmember Jones.
Madam Mayor, with your permission and the indulgence of my fellow council members, I'd like to just take a, a minute or two to recognize the passing of Opal Frances Winman Rogers. She didn't like the name Opal, so most people knew her as Fran Rogers or as her father affectionately called her when she was young, Fan. She grew up in Corleville on, in the Hundred Block of Seventh Street. In nineteen twenty-five, she married Bob, I'm sorry, she was born in nineteen twenty-five. In nineteen forty-seven, she married Bob Rogers. Bob would become an eight-year council member and then become mayor of Corleville. But to me, probably her most significant contribution to Corleville, in nineteen sixty-four, she was the leader of a cadet Girl Scout troop, Girl Scout troop number fifty-five. And that Girl Scout troop held a bake sale in Bazaar to raise the first money raised for the Corleville Library. And that library was in the basement of Old City Hall down on Second Avenue. And she was appointed to the first library board of directors. She was actually named chair of the library board of directors. Clarence Wilson was the mayor at that time and Clarence supported her to that position. And then she became a volunteer. She eventually became a staff member, staff librarian, and retired in nineteen ninety-one. But I think, and I know Laurie's, we'll probably talk about the one-fiftieth, but I know when we look back at the hundred and fifty years of Corleville, there are some iconic people that have been, have made great contributions. And, and Fran Rogers was one of those. She was very humble, very quiet, a very kind person, but had a huge impact on building the library in Corleville. And she passed away a couple of weeks ago, December, or February sixteenth, I believe. So was ninety-eight years old, lived a long life, but had a significant impact on Corleville. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that update and that little bit of Corleville history.
Let's end with that.
Yeah, let's do it. Oh, you don't have, are you?
I don't.
Okay.
That's all right.
All right. Thank you very much. All right then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Move by Wynne, seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.